The following is a replay of voteradio.com's coverage of the 2010 Wake County Commissioners' Candidate Forum presented by Wake Up Wake County and the Wake County League of Women Voters. The forum was held in Raleigh on September 27, 2010.
And without further ado, Marion Lewin is going to be our moderator this evening. She is with the League of Women Voters of Wake County. She's very experienced with this and she's going to lay the rules for all of us. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Marion Lewin. I'm with the League and I'm going to be the moderator this evening. Welcome to the 2010 Candidate Forum for Wake County Commissioners. Number one, please turn off your cellphones and remember to refrain from applauding as the candidates as they speak. Just to let you know how the election for county commissioner works, the candidates come from a district. There are four districts here, but you as a voter will vote for every single district. So you will vote for all of, well, one candidate, but you will be voting for all the districts. Okay. This is a forum, not a debate. A forum is designed to give all the candidates an opportunity to present themselves and to speak on the issues. Each candidate will have a minute and a half for an opening statement and a minute and a half for a closing statement. They have drawn numbers to determine the order in which they will speak for the opening statement. For the closing statement, the candidates will speak in reverse order. The candidates have said that they prefer to come up to the podium to give their opening speech, so they will be doing that when I'm finished. The candidates will have one minute to respond to questions. Candidates, please keep an eye on the timers. There are these ladies in the front here who will give you ten-minute second, ten-second warnings and then a stop. So please end when you see that stop. After the opening statement, we will have one question that each candidate in each district will be asked. After that one question, we will have two or three rounds of questions. Those questions will be given to each district and I will alternate who speaks first to respond to the questions. And candidates, if I forget, you can remind me that who spoke first the last time. After these rounds of questions, we will open the forum to questions from the audience. Please keep your questions to the point and avoid any lengthy preliminary speeches. The questions must be directed to a district, not to an individual candidate. And we will, since we have a second camera, we're going to allow that you, allow you to come and give your, and give your own question. So at the end of the second round, when I say it's time for audience questions, you may line up along there and that microphone will be the one that you speak into, give your question. Remember that every candidate will not respond to every question. The candidates can use their closing statement to address any additional points that they did not have an opportunity to make during the question period. And if I need to remind the candidates with the order in which they are giving their opening, Tony Gurley will go first, Don Mile will go second, Joe Bryan, Steve Rao, Lindy Brown, and Jack Nichols. So I will leave it to the candidates now.
Good evening. I'm Tony Gurley and I'm seeking my third term on the Board of Commissioners. I grew up in McDowell County, North Carolina, and attended UNC Chapel Hill, receiving a pharmacy degree in 1978. My wife, Robin, received her pharmacy degree in 1980. And we were married that year, 30 years ago this year, and moved to Raleigh in 1981. We started Blue Ridge Pharmacy and Gurley's Pharmacy and managed those stores until 1999. We sold our businesses and took some time off. And during that time off, I attended law school at North Carolina Central University and was elected to the Board of Commissioners in 2002 during my second year of law school. For those who question a career move into law and politics from pharmacy, I simply tell people that I grew tired of all the respect. And it has worked. I've served for eight years utilizing my business and legal background with the goal of improving the quality of life for all citizens of Wake County. I believe a community benefits by empowering its citizens and that an overreaching and excessive government harms a community. Citizens are empowered by a great education, a vibrant economy, and a safe and healthy environment, and that's what I work toward. Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Don Mile and I am a candidate for Wake County Board of Commissioner. I am a lifelong resident of Wake County and my family has been a part of this county since the early 1800s. And over the past 30 years, I have served the people of North Carolina as a soldier. More recently, returning from Iraq, I volunteered and went to Louisiana in support of Katrina. I've had a number of jobs in state government, but only one career: public service. With that core value at heart, I'm running for the Wake County Board of Commissioner so that I can continue advocating on behalf of the public interest, continue fighting for change, continue making Wake County, North Carolina, a better place to live because I've seen what happened when government failed its people. As your county commissioner, I will work to strengthen our schools by recruiting and retaining the best teachers possible, expanding access to quality pre-kindergarten programs, and addressing the achievement gap. I will work with the Wake County Legislative Delegation to deal with the challenges resulting from Wake County's explosive growth by improving our public transportation system, tackle our water shortages, and work to create economic opportunities. I want you to know how passionate I am about the issue that matters to Wake County, and I would get up every morning and work as hard as I did to win this race and take that passion to the Wake County Board of Commission. So ladies and gentlemen, it's time. It's time for a change. It's time for the citizens of Wake County to have responsible government. Again, thank you, Don Mile.
My name is Joe Bryan and I'm currently one of your Wake County Commissioners. And first of all, thanks to Wake Up Wake County and to the League of Women Voters for hosting this forum. This will undoubtedly have been the largest turnout that I've ever seen in a county commissioner's debate, certainly shows a lot of interest. And again, thank you for coming and becoming engaged in full public policy debate. I've fortunately been in public service now for 23 years, eight years on the Knightdale Town Council and seven years as the mayor of Knightdale, and now eight years as one of your Wake County Commissioners. I enjoy public service. My wife and I live in Knightdale, obviously, and we've got two daughters, three grandchildren. I'm running hard for reelection, maybe not as hard as Steve's trying to run, but I'm trying to train for a marathon. And, and public service is a marathon. If you've been on the 64 bypass or you looked at the, you voted for our new school bond issue, or you're interested in transit, those are many things that your Board of Commissioners have been involved with, along with mental health with opening our new facility here in November. I truly enjoy public service. I appreciate you allowing me to serve you. I have had one job for 30 years with, with Wells Fargo Advisors that's allowed me to have that flexibility. I am also the president of the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners, which allows me to in fact interact with all our various partners to keep Wake County a great place to live, work, and play, and raise a family. Thank you.
I thank the League of Women Voters and Wake Up Wake Up County for hosting this debate. I thank Commissioner Gurley for coming and all the candidates. My name is Steve Rao and I'm literally running for the office to be on District Three Board of Commissioners as I run a race across Wake County and every municipality. Unlike most lawyers, I took a different course in my career. I've for 14 years have been in the innovation and industry of technology, running sales forces, traveled all around the world, and now I run a small, growing company in the Research Triangle Park in the sports industry. This election is about our vision for the future. It's about the kind of county that we want to live in over the next 15, 20, 30 years. It's about a Wake County with jobs that are abundant in the industries of innovation, about school systems that are world-class for our children, about what kind of leadership we're going to have on our Board of Commissioners to deal with tough times. Revenues down by $50 million, four years ago, $980 million, now revenues are $930 million. Expenses are rising. Our state is seeing a $3.6 billion shortfall in the state. And as your, as your next commissioner, I'm going to turn to innovation, not only as a way to help create jobs, but I'm going to turn to our local innovators in Wake County so we can come up with solutions to tackle the tough issues that we face. I don't have all the answers, but I will work hard and fight every day, just like I've done my whole life, to be your, to be a great leader and to be a consensus builder, and I'll bring energy and vision to our county commission. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. My name is Jack Nichols and I'm a candidate for Wake County Commission.
Did I look at that, Lindy? I did.
Yes, you did. I'll sit down. I know your age, Jack, and you got it all on the plate.
Sit me in, Coach.
Normally, I would just let you go, but let's just say you got the next term. It'll be okay. Good evening, everyone. For those of you that do not know me, my name is Lindy Brown, and it is always a pleasure to be among friends. But more importantly, ladies and gentlemen, for those of you that do not know me, for 29 years, I have been a strong advocate while wearing many hats, such as a clinical social worker, a wife, a mother, and a grandmother of four. However, the hat that I most cherish is the hat of being your county commissioner representing District Two. In 2006, the citizens of Wake County elected me to the Board of Commissioners. Due to my willingness to be accessible, demonstrate good leadership skills, and be the voice of reason, I've been known to be the hardest-working county commissioner, and more importantly, many citizens have dubbed me as the people county commissioner. And they've done that because of my work attributes. I rise daily, ladies and gentlemen, with deliberation to serve for quality education for all children, and more importantly, adults who attend Wake Tech Community College. I rise daily, ladies and gentlemen, for workforce affordable housing, to protect our fire and EMS departments, and more importantly, for job opportunities for existing and new businesses here in Wake County. I advocate and I supported Nevada's Flu Vaccine Center in Holly Springs, and was the only county commissioner who advocated to keep the Conagra Slim Gym Plant in Garner open, which employed over 700 employees. I pledge to continue to be your county commissioner. Thank you.
All right, Jack, you can go to your floor.
Hello again. My name is Jack Nichols and I'm a candidate for Wake County Commission. Rather than talk about a personal bio, I've got material out there, I'd like to just go straight to what I think of the issues. Wake County did not become one of the best places to live and work in America by accident. It took vision, planning, and hard work by city and county leaders, were willing to work together and put aside partisanship, and worked towards consensus. When I was fortunate to serve on the Board of Commissioners previously, we understood that local government is not a place for partisanship. Conservatives and liberals, Democrats and Republicans alike, the board on which I served was able to work together for solutions to the challenges we faced. I had the honor of serving as vice chair when Vernon Malone was chair of the county commission. We understood that the best incentives for high-paying jobs were great schools, strong infrastructure, and a clean environment. And by infrastructure, I mean water, sewer, and good roads and transportation. Since then, some of the smartest and most creative people in the world have come to Wake County because of those incentives that we put out there and the high jobs that we helped create. And in addition, because of the economic development, the taxpayers got a return on their investment because the tax base was expanded and therefore the taxes are low. I'm running for Wake County Commission to restore sanity and civility to the city, to the county commission, and I would appreciate your support. Thank you.
Okay, we're going to proceed to the question period. If you've looked at the newspaper or listened to the TV and radio recently, you'll realize that there's one issue that has, has, has received widespread attention in the community. A significant change to, has been proposed to how the Wake County's public school system operates. So in order to begin the debate, to begin the forum, I will ask the following question of all the candidates. Because the Wake County Commissioners control funding for Wake County schools, the Commissioners have a great deal of power over education in Wake County. Do you support the proposals for reassignment coming from the current school board majority? And we'll start with District One. Mr. Bryan, you can go first. There should be a mic there. If it's not on, there should be a switch to put the mic on.
I support the initial efforts of the school board. I've supported prior school boards. I'll continue to support this school board, but more than anything, we need to have a comprehensive plan that's not just all about drawing lines on a map and to focus on academic excellence. In eastern Wake County, in Knightdale, the Knightdale High School has an average SAT of 919. We live in an urban county. That's unacceptable. We need to get focused, refocused on our academics and find solutions to that, and we need to do it in unity, as Mr. Nichols mentioned. It certainly needs to be with a lot of civility and including a number of people at the table to arrive at these conclusions. Our minister on Sunday spoke about conflict. Our, our community's in conflict. There's a lot of different opinions out there about how best to deal with education, but at the end of the day, we've got to find some solutions for our whole community and that debate needs to be inclusive and include everyone.
I disagree with many of the things that this present school board is doing. As someone that have attended Wake County Public Schools and put three kids through Wake County Public School System, I do see a problem with what they are attempting to do. I think that from what we must do is that we may take a comprehensive approach and make sure that we provide education for all 143,000 kids of Wake County. This cannot be taken lightly. I think that we must do much more. I think that when you look at kids in terms of where they are in school, in terms of what is taking place, I think that we must provide them the opportunities that they need. Because you see what this all comes down to is economic development. In order for us to provide the type of workforce that we need here in Wake County, we must have a strong education system.
Yes, Ms. Brown?
I too have concerns about the direction that the current school board majority is going in, and I have spoken with several of them, asking them to slow down and to look at and consider all of the avenues, but more importantly, the costs that may occur as a result of this plan that they're looking toward, particularly the zoning aspect of it. And I will tell you, I am working very diligently to ensure that you, the citizens of Wake County, know what the zone implementation will be and how it will cost you as taxpayers in the long run. So I ask that you continue on attending as many of the school board meetings to get your assessment of the costs that will occur regarding this new zoning process. Thank you.
Hi, Mr. Gurley.
We haven't really received specific proposals, but seeing everything in the news, and I do agree that we're in a conflict now in the community. I support the current school board in that they are looking to improve the academic achievement for the students of Wake County. I believe that the past 54.2% graduation rate for the lower socioeconomic students is unacceptable. I believe that the, the past history of the school system allowing less than half of the lower socioeconomic students to take algebra, even when they were judged to be capable of it, I believe that, that was wrong. I believe everything that we do should be focused on the individual student achievement, and when students learn in schools, all else will be less important.
I'm really concerned about the direction that we're headed in, in Wake County with our schools. I'm the only candidate in this race with kids in the Wake County schools currently. My question to the voters is this: if you had a $1.2 billion business, would you change that business without a plan? If John Chambers had a line of routers that had some product defects, would you make the change? I think the answer is no. You wouldn't want that change without a plan. So as the next county commissioner, I want, I do want to see a better plan on how we're going to make this school system work. I think what it's going to do is it's going to end up creating more high-poverty schools. And we look in Beckleburg County and realize that their high-poverty schools are increasing, their property tax is higher than Wake County's property tax at 70 cents. Not, not all of that's responsible because of the schools, but I think they are having issues with cost. I think it also comes down to economic development. We're so divided, we're hurting our image. And we've got to bring companies like SAS and Cree and Red Hat and SciQuest and build an innovation economy, but we're not going to do it with what we're doing with our school system. So, thank you.
No applause, please.
The Wake County Commission are the bankers for the school system, and with respect, they only fund 26% of the school board's budget, so they don't really control the money for the school board. But just like the bankers for any business or any client that they represent, they want to have a good business plan. Wake County's population is going to double in the next 20 years, and the number of students is projected to increase by 60,000. So 20 years from now, we'll have over 200,000 students. So the desperate need is to have a plan that our community agrees on. Now, my wife and I sent our sons through the Wake County schools. They went to Hunter, Ligon, and Inlow, so I know how great the magnet school systems are. That's what I want for the kids of Wake County, the student achievement that the other commissioner candidates have talked about, but also the quality schools that my children receive, that's what I want for the 200,000 students that are going to be part of the Wake County school system in the future. And I'm concerned that the plan that they're proposing will not do that.
Thank you. All right, the next question will go to District One. It is, "The population of Raleigh and other Wake County municipalities is growing fast, placing increased pressure on our water supply. Raleigh's water supply plan for eastern Wake includes spending $250 million to dam the Little River. Do you support this project and why or why not? What should we be doing to ensure adequate water?" And, yeah, Mr. Mile, you may go first.
Okay, thank you. Well, I support Little River, but there's, there's a caveat to that. And the reason being is that from my understanding, the Army Corps of Engineers are not sure whether it's going to give us the amount of water that we need in order to provide water to the rest of the population as we continue to grow. I think water conservation is going to be crucial for us. I mean, we have other sources throughout the county and we're going to have to rely on those sources and make sure that we are providing adequate water supply for the rest of the county. Our biggest concern is that when we're dealing with Falls Lake, it's the contamination that's taking place. And that's going to be a bigger threat to us and our water supply than anything else we are doing right now. As you know, we went through that drought a couple of years back. The citizens did what was asked of them. They conserved, they conserved, and they made sure that our water supply was able to last much longer. So with that, I support it, but with that caveat, that I want to make sure that we are putting money into a source that's going to provide the water necessary for the citizens in the coming future. Thank you.
I've supported the Little River for about 23 years. It is one of many, it's our only new resource that we will be adding in Wake County. We currently need to add additional resources. We need to conserve. We need to certainly protect Falls Lake, particularly in the, in the other counties. Wake County's pretty well protected it with our amount of open space that we have up there. I chair our Sustainability Task Force. The county commissioners have had a major effort over a number of years for environmental stewardship. That's something that we're all interested in. We've got to get the Little River on, you know, online. It's about 17 million gallons a day. It'll, you know, allow us to probably handle another 30,000 to 40,000 people, but that's not enough when, when we're growing at, you know, when we're growing fast at 35,000. So it is only one element of what we need to be doing in the area of making sure we've got resources and we're maintaining our resources and we're continuing to conserve as well.
All right, thank you. District Two will get a different question. "As a county commissioner, you will, you will be presented with proposals for new development that may have adverse implications for our watershed and reduce open space. How will you weigh the choice between development and the environment?"
Let me just say, from a, just an average citizen, we need to always ensure that our development does not erode our water supplies nor any, any other environmental factor in Wake County. I will tell you that I have been endorsed by the Realtors, but, but not by the Home Builders Association this time. Because of the stand that I've taken, I do feel very strongly that when the developers should also take responsibility for the development that they're spreading throughout Wake County. And that includes making sure that we have adequate roads for our development and water and sewer. So definitely there is an issue, and I will be continuing advocating to protect our environment.
All right, District Three. "Our metro region has been highly ranked nationally, except for having a bold transit system. Many people view this, this addition as critical to our being able to compete economically. Meanwhile, Wake County's population will double. To pay for this regional transit system, would you support placing a half-cent sales tax transit funding referendum on the ballot in 2011?"
I would support that, half a cent sales tax increase and the referendum to the voters of Wake County, but I would want to continue to see the long-term plan put forth by the Triangle Transit Authority. I've been researching this issue extensively. I like the way we would implement it with, starting with bus service and then looking at light rail and commuter rail options. The alternative analysis is already occurring, looking at where the initial lines would be. One of them would be from Northwest Cary to the Triangle Town Center, and another one would be from Durham to Raleigh and just different nodes. I think there's a couple of reasons why it's important to have transit. One is the economic development attractiveness that we have that kind of a metro system here in the Triangle, I mean here in Wake County, the environmental benefits of reducing gas emissions, reducing urban sprawl, and enhancing our quality of life. And I think that it's going to be really tough with the kind of growth, we just can't build enough roads to deal with this kind of growth. So I would support that, and I would like to continue to work with them to see a comprehensive plan.
I think the way that the current county commissioners are approaching this issue helps to illustrate the view that I, that I prefer, which is to include all of the community in this decision. The Triangle Transit Authority is putting a plan together, but we are taking that plan and have visited all 12 municipalities, seeking input. This is going to be a Wake County plan before I, as a commissioner, agree to send it to Wake County citizens for a vote. I will support a fiscally responsible plan. There is not a plan on the table yet, and I will support a plan that is supported by the municipalities, which means they have input and that all the citizens will be able to benefit. And the main benefit, as Mr. Rao said, starts with a, with a comprehensive bus system for transit. So when I see a good plan, I'll be willing to send it forward on a referendum, whether it's 2011 or 2012, I don't know.
All right. District Seven. "Given the economy, the need for affordable housing is increasing in Wake County. Do you have specific recommendations for improving the supply of affordable housing, such as inclusionary zoning or other measures to guarantee mixed-income areas throughout the county?"
Of course, Wake County has a housing authority and there, there's the Raleigh Housing Authority. The, the state housing fin- The, the State Housing Finance Agency has tax incentives. And the reason I mention all that is because Wake County can take advantage of all that and bring in affordable housing and work with the private developers to do that. In some cases, that will require zoning with respect to the Triangle Transit proposal, which I support, that being on the referendum. It's going to be critical that we place affordable housing along that light rail corridor. That's what's going to make it economically sustainable so that as we look for locating affordable housing, that's one of the places where we want to encourage its location.
Thank you. District One. "Wake County has made significant cuts to personnel, programs and services in response to the current economic environment. While taxpayers and businesses have a reduced ability to absorb tax increases, the county still has legal obligations it must meet. What additional cuts will you propose if revenue from current sources continues to decline? If not, what additional taxes or fees would you suggest the county impose?"
I'm not real good at following directions. I'd like to say, first of all, Tony Gurley is the smartest county commissioner that I've ever worked with, and hopefully you can tell that from his answers. I chair Cavalier Metropolitan Planning Organization, which is the transportation avenue that we have in this county. We got the Stat Committee in place. We worked on the legislation to have the authority to have it, have a vote of the public for a transit plan. When we have a plan, I will support that. We have to have a plan in, in place. Transit is very important as part of a multimodal approach. Now, we have cut from about nine hundred and eighty million to nine hundred and fifty million dollars, and we do that through prioritization of our services. If you're in the Human Services Department, there may be a hundred and twenty different functions. You do not want to be number one hundred and twenty. We will continue to, to do that and make sure that we are doing more with less. One out of ten hard-working North Carolinians are unemployed. Many people are, are underemployed. Government is going to have to continue to look at that and be transformed.
Well, I support a balanced approach to this issue. And I think that it's important for us to make sure we do a, a needs assessment and look at all the different programs that's available and what we may need in the future. To, at this point, to make any statement in terms of what we can do without, I'm not sure that we, we can make that without looking at the total picture in terms of what the county provides to all our citizens. For instance, right now, we're dealing with a mental health issue. Now, do we want to cut out mental health? I think not. Do we want to cut back on providing services to our schools? No, I think not. So I think it's important that we must use a balanced approach from the standpoint in terms that we may have to look at some additional revenue. We may be able to cut, but we're going to have to wait until we are there and we do the needs assessment. And most importantly, we need to get the Wake County personnel and staff involved. They know where the cuts can come from.
Thank you. District Two. "With sixty thousand students projected by 2020, needing thirty-three more schools, a new school bond referendum will be needed in the near future. Considering all the controversy currently, how would you bring the community together in order to pass a bond?"
Thank you for that question. First of all, let me just say, as a county commissioner, I am state mandated to provide building schools, which is called our capital project, a role of the county commissioners. State mandated to do so. And with that being said, it, I do feel it's my responsibility to build the schools. However, I would be questioning our school board and determining where those schools actually need to be done, built, and also the cost. The Board of Commissioners, we are solely responsible for the cost of the building. And we do not have the authority to dictate to the school board this, actually the site, but we can oversee and question the actually cost of it. And as your county commissioner, that is my accountability to you. Thank you.
All right, District Three. "Falls Lake has been declared impaired and rules are being developed by the state for cleaning it up. What measures do you think the county should take to protect this watershed, particularly in negotiating with upstream's counties who have weaker storm, stormwater regulations?"
Thank you for that question. I believe that we should not allow commercial development in the Falls Lake watershed. I was the only commissioner on our board to cast that vote several months ago for a proposed development. I think doing a development in the Falls Lake watershed sends the wrong signal to the counties that are upstream, and we have to be very careful in relaying that message. I understand that what is being done is an improvement for the specific site that was developed, but we have got to make sure that Falls Lake is protected and the current watershed protections that are in place need to be honored. And I think it's incumbent on the Board of Commissioners to take that message to all the other counties as well.
This is an issue that I agree with Commissioner Gurley on, and I really liked his vote on it. I think that, I, I would say that we've got to protect that watershed, our quality of water. It also impacts our economic development, and I do think we have to educate our neighboring counties and look at, you know, innovative solutions that we can continue to think of to reduce those pollutants as well in, in Falls Lake. So I'm, I'm going to be learning more about this issue, but I think at the end of the day, all of us need, in a time with, you know, demands on our water supply, we also have to take very seriously the quality of our drinking water. And, and I think we've got to take this Falls Lake issue very seriously moving forward. So I would do that as a county commissioner, and I do agree with Commissioner Gurley's position on that issue in his last vote.
Thank you. District Seven. "Given that Wake County is among the fastest-growing counties in the nation, what is your vision about how we should develop and plan for growth? How would you reconcile the desire or the need for job growth and housing construction with a need to protect our watersheds, open space and farms?"
Thank you for that question. This is probably the hardest challenge, I think, for any local government, because at one level, you want to encourage the growth, but at the other level, you need to manage that growth. When I was on the Board of Commissioners before, I supported watershed protection. Unfortunately, I was on the losing side of some of those votes. I agree with Tony and Steve with respect to watershed protection. I'm the only candidate in this race that's been endorsed by the Sierra Club, and I think it's because of my past work in watershed protection. The other thing that you need to do, though, is you need to have a coordinated, comprehensive plan with the various municipalities in the county to make sure that you target the growth by the use of water and sewer and that it's the kind of growth that you want and not let it to be an ad hoc sort of hopscotch growth across the county. It has to be managed, and then ultimately, you have to figure out a way to have growth pay for itself.
Okay, the next question goes to District One. And even though Mr. Bryan anticipated his, his input on transit, this is a transit question. Traffic congestion, air pollution and development are increasing. Is there an increasing need for public transit? If so, would you support a half-cent local option sales tax referendum for expanding bus service and adding light and commuter rail in the region? And I, I think, yeah, Mr. Myle must go first.
Yes, I would support the half cent. I, I think it's important that as we grow, and Wake County is definitely growing fast, that we must look at other means of transportation. As our campaign and I move around and I talk with different people, I always bring up my mom, because the fastest-growing population here in Wake County are our senior citizens. And that's why transportation is vital. Back about a year ago, mom, she's eighty-one now, and she, we had to stop her from driving. But that doesn't mean that she does not still want to go and do everything that she wants to do. So providing those types of transportation to our senior citizens is going to be vital to us. When you look around, we've got twelve municipalities, and if you haven't tried driving from Wake Forest to Holly Springs lately, try it. And you understand what I'm saying. That's why we must provide other means of transportation for our senior citizens, for all our citizens, to get back and forth and move around to the different municipalities.
Yes, I, I will support a vote of the public on this item when we have a fully vetted plan. When we have gone around, when David Cook has gone around to the twelve municipalities, if, if the municipalities have buses, they want more bus service. If they've got a train track, they want a train. And they want it first. So my guess is, once this economy improves, that the public is ready to vote on this item to make that additional investment in, in transit. On the education issue, Wake Ed Partnership and the Greater Raleigh Chamber of Commerce recommended that county commissioners, since we are the bankers, that we would be the ones responsible for building the schools. If a bond issue is not successful, I think that's, again, a movement we will need to move in that direction. Best thing we've got on farms is we have a farm use tax that keeps open space. And our open space, we passed a fifty million dollar bond issue with your help a few years ago, with seventy percent of the people voting for it. If I get seventy percent on the vote on this election, I'm going to run for king myself.
All right, District Two. "Jordan and Falls Lake are our primary drinking water supplies and they're polluted. How would you, how should the county weigh the demand for development versus the need for future clean water for residents? Are, are our storm water controls strong enough?"
No, our storm water controls is not strong enough, and that's why it's important, as a board member of the Board of Commissioners, I will continue to work with the Sierra Club and also with our Wake delegation to ensure that those areas are addressed.
All right, thank you. Next question goes to District Three. "In view that state funding for schools has already been reduced this year and will probably, probably be reduced even more next year, what should the county commissioners do to help the schools serve additional students, maintain existing programs and continue the school's commitment for improving the quality of instruction? If faced with the needs for additional school budget cuts, would you look for additional revenue sources?"
Well, I've been researching this issue extensively, just applying my business mind, and it's a really scary time in Wake County with such rapid revenue declines. To answer your, answer your question, I would be open to looking at other ways of bringing in revenue to fund and build, you know, new schools and also to do the kind of things we need to do to focus on student achievement and continue to give money to the Wake County School Board. It also is going to require prioritization. We're going to have to look at that budget and realize, you know, do we really need marble on the courthouse? Could we like reallocate money and free up cash and some other aspect of the budget? Maybe, you know, looking at innovation and technology, ways we can save money and putting more money, freeing up cash, putting that into the school system. I, I, I don't know all the answers to it. I think we've got to look at impact fees of some nature, perhaps, user fees and all of these sources, but I would be open as a commissioner to look at that, because right now, with the way the economic climate is, I don't see us getting out of this economic mess we're in.
Thank you.
I also think we're in a mess. The state budget is definitely going to impact schools next year. I've served three years on the Wake County Board of Commissioners as chairman of that Board of Commissioners, and in each of those years, we have come very close to funding this, the school board's request for funds. In fact, the second year that I was chairman, we even readdressed the budget mid-year and provided an extra two-point-one million dollars to the school system's budget when their student enrollment came in higher than projected. We've also started a Citizens Facility Advisory Committee. We involve the public trying to reduce the cost of construction. If you look at the middle schools now and they have the cafeteria and an auditorium, which is now called a cafitorium, that is a result of looking to citizens and reducing the cost of the facilities. That's the only way we're going to come up with additional funds for future construction as well.
Thank you very much. Okay, District Seven. "Other counties and states are using real estate transfer taxes and impact fees to pay for schools and other infrastructure related to growth. Wake is one of the fastest-growing counties in the nation. Would you support seeking authority to use transfer taxes or impact fees to supplement property taxes as a source of revenue for Wake County?"
I think that's one of the things Wake County has to look at. When I said that growth needs to pay for itself, this is a good example. You have to set up a situation so that, that the new construction that's required when both residential and commercial businesses move to this area, that they pay for that growth. The reality is that using property taxes on residences is an inefficient way to raise enough money for the school system. It takes, assuming the average size of a home, about two and a half homes to pay for one, the, the revenue from that, to pay for one student in a classroom. That's just not an efficient way to raise money for the, for the school system, which is sixty percent of the county's budget. So we're going to have to look at alternative ways. I do think that we also ought to look at economic development. For example, attracting businesses to the Research Triangle Park is a way that you're going to increase your tax base and therefore get the revenue from that, and you won't have to spread the tax burden out to residential taxpayers.
All right, thank you very much. Now, we're going to proceed to audience questions. Karen Ringe will hold the microphone and hand it to you when you're ready. So you can line up when you're ready to ask audience questions. Sir, you can just proceed. Everybody who wants to ask a question can line up. We will proceed, District One, District Two, District Three, District Seven. We will keep going in order. I'm assuming that everybody here will be very respectful and very succinct in their questions. If not, I will cut them off. All right, thank you. So the first question goes to District One.
My name is Beverly Moriarty, and thank you very much for being here this evening. I will address my question to Lindy Brown.
No, District One.
Oh, District One, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm sorry. If you don't, if you want to wait and let somebody else do District One, you can do that.
Oh, District One. Well, I can address it District One. It doesn't really matter. I am a nurse over at Dorothea Dix Hospital, and we talked about one thing resoundingly in this forum, and that is growth, growth, growth. At the same time, while we have all these people coming into this community, we have, we have been dismantling Dorothea Dix Hospital as we speak, in the hopes that we're going to be able to divert these people over into the other hospitals, which up to this point have not been able to receive these patients because of the lack of the ability to attract and retain staffing, partly because of the fact they're in such remote areas. Dorothea Dix is in Wake County, the largest county, the most highly populated, and the most, the hospital that's functioned at the highest level, and yet it's the one being dismantled. I guess my question really is to you, is to what is your vision for trying to protect these patients who are our most vulnerable citizens after a one billion dollar expenditure of funds for a ten-year program of supposedly reform, that money being wasted?
Okay, I think that's a question. I think the question is, what would they do? So we'll let them answer the question.
Mental health reform in North Carolina has failed. It has failed the consumers of mental health. The county commissioners in two thousand and five put together a mental health summit. From that summit, a number of services, including the opening, an opening coming in November of a new facility. We have partnered with, also with Holly Hill for additional beds, and we had additional beds at Dix for a while. Personally, I think Dix should have never been closed. And I think if that property is ever sold, that that money should go directly into a trust fund, again, to help serve people that have mental illness. We do not do nearly enough in, in that area, but I do think, as far as from the county commissioner's standpoint, we have lobbied very hard for a long period of time, and we know that the state system has failed on their, on their reform. I wish we would have done more.
Oh, wait a minute. You get, you get, you get two for one. You get to hear the other candidate, too. You get to hear the other candidate.
No, I, I'm very supportive of Dix and the things that, that the people there do at Dix. I think it's important for us to make sure that we provide a strong mental health system. We are talking about consumer. We are talking about individuals that cannot do for themselves. We are talking about a situation wherein that we, the community, we must step forward and we must take corrective action here. So I'm very concerned about what's taking place at Dix. I work in Butler, and I see the new regional facility that's located down there, and it's just not adequate enough to provide the services that we need. And from the standpoint of Wake County, I think that we missed the vote on this. And the reason I say that is because we should have been working long before now to build a facility here in Wake County for the consumers and make sure we provide the service that we need for our consumers here in Wake County.
Thank you. We have a lot of people wanting to ask questions, so if you could keep your question short. And you go, and your question goes to Lindy Brown, District Two.
My name is Barbara Gardner, and I'm a longtime employee at Dorothea Dix Hospital, who is now retired. And Lindy and I worked together at Dorothea Dix Hospital, so if you want me to ask somebody else, I'd be glad to. But how do we catch the boat? In December, Dix will stop accepting admissions. Over two-thirds of the admissions to Dorothea Dix Hospital are Wake County. As Mr. Miles said, Wake County missed the boat years ago when they refused to set up a facility or even participate in talking about how to...
We need a question.
Okay. How are we gonna catch the boat? What are we gonna do? The present facility...
Okay, that's a question. Great, thank you very much. Sorry about that.
What we're gonna do is literally continue on lobbying out state legislators. Senator Josh Steines is here from the Wake delegation. I know our Secretary of Human Resources, Human Services has already said that it will be closing in December, but if you know me as well as most of you do, I don't ever give up. I have a mouth, and I will continue on lobbying to keep Dorothea Dix open.
Yes, I'm Jeff, I'm Jeff Smith, and the city of Shaw has a light rail system known as the Blue Land, or on a lance, I think it's called. Do you think the city of Raleigh will ever, will ever get a similar, like rail system?
I hope so. I think that one of the things that the Board of Commissioners will have to take leadership on is when that referendum for that half-cent sales tax is put on the, on the ballot for the voters, I think the commissioners need to go out and lobby for that, because, and I mean lobby the taxpayers to support it, because that's the only way we're gonna fund it. We had put in place something like that before. We didn't get the federal funding for it, and the wheel sort of fell off. Now we're back on track again. But it's not just gonna be light rail. I think we have to look at rubber tire and some of the other transit needs. But in terms of the long-term growth of this community, we have to have something like light rail like that, really for the economic health of our community.
Thank you. All right, start over again at District One.
Hi, my name is Lynn Edmonds, and I live in Raleigh. Are you concerned that the actions of the school board have resulted in a very respected accreditation agency threatening to take away accreditation from our high schools? And please explain your answer.
I'm very concerned about that. I think anyone that understands the education process is also concerned. If, in fact, that Wake County public school system loses their accreditation, it's gonna have a drastic impact on our kids in terms of this being able to get in different colleges and universities, and also them having the opportunity to receive different scholarships. Matter of fact, I have an article that was written there in the paper, I think it was served, the paper News and Observer came out. It was a young lady that was in South Carolina, and that was a prime example of that. Here was an interview that were recruited highly from many different schools, but once they found out that the school system she was in was not accredited, they all turned her down. We cannot afford that. As in the military, we always refer to that as a no-go, which is maybe totally unacceptable.
I would expect all 900,000 citizens in Wake County are concerned about that, concerned about the potential, yet to be, there's not a plan necessarily in place yet to be evaluated, but again, just to be having that types of discussion and how that impacts the view of what has been a world-class education system that we've had here in Wake County. So yes, I'm, just like everyone else, concerned about that. I'm concerned about the potential litigation from NWAACP. You know, I think these issues, again, are not benefiting our community.
All right, District Two.
Carl Fora, living Cary. And Ms. Brown, I was wondering, it seems all the concerns that the citizens have here today are all stemming from growth.
Yes.
And have you ever considered the option of putting the brakes on growth and figuring a way to do that so that we're not subsidizing the developers' profit in the future?
To answer your question, no, I have not considered. I have heard some citizens said, "Close the gates of all quarters of Wake County, so no one else can come in." To me, that's doing our citizen a disservice. But more importantly, my rationale for not closing the gate and putting a stop on people relocating is because of the fact that our revenues have decreased. And if you allow special business corporations coming into Wake County to supplement the property taxes, that's, that is one of the avenue in supporting our citizens who are on fixed income. We are citizens of this country, we're all welcome, and I represent every person that comes in here, and I do not believe in turning anyone back. Thank you.
All right, next question is District Three.
Hi, my name is Patricia Dillon, and I'm from Raleigh. Earlier this year, the Board of Commissioners spent a considerable, considerable amount of time debating insurance coverage of abortion for county employees. If you're elected, would you support covering comprehensive reproductive health care, which includes abortion services as a part of the county insurance plan, and why?
Could you repeat the question? Is it, would I support?
Yes. Would you support comprehensive reproductive health care, which includes abortion services for county employees, and why?
Well, I am a conservative Democrat, but I am pro-choice, and so I believe that a woman has a right to choose. I personally don't believe that local municipal or county commission officers should be making these types of decisions. I would leave this to the courts of our state and the United States Supreme Court, and I don't feel comfortable when these kinds of issues come into the fray and take us away from our focus, and what I wanna get to work on, which is building innovation, building our economy, building better schools, and building a better future for our kids. So I would support it.
Okay, absolutely not. I would not support the county insurance paying for abortions. It is illegal in North Carolina for government, county governments to pay for abortions. I favor the same policy that is in place in the federal government that President Obama has put in place, where abortion is only covered in the case of rape, incest, or if the health of the mother is in danger. We had a vote on that previously, and our county attorney told us it was illegal for the county to cover it, and it's simply a matter of following state law. I assure you that this will end up in court, and Wake County will be liable for including abortions in the coverage as we're doing right now.
All right, District Seven.
Hi, I'm Vicky Adamson, and I live very close to this church. Given the fact that a Title VI civil rights complaint and accreditation review pending against our public school system, what do you think the impact will be on economic development? Can we attract new jobs, companies, if our school system is such a PR mess?
That is one of my biggest concerns. For 20 years, when businesses have come to Wake County, one of the first questions they asked was, "How are the schools?" And until now, they've been satisfied with that answer. But I think, and I read the Title VI complaint yesterday, and if you look at that and the possible loss of accreditation, I think it's gonna be a real problem for Wake County. It's gonna create a negative environment for the economic development that's part of the success of this community, and it should be a wake-up call, I guess that's a punt, given where we are tonight, but it should be a wake-up call about whether or not some of the decisions that are being made don't have such incredible consequences, and I'm afraid that they're not being thought through.
Thank you. All right, District One.
Thank you for being here tonight. My name is John Buck. I'm a school teacher in a charter high school. Charter high schools are publicly funded, but the funding for the capital expense is not part of the charter program. Do you support continued development of charter high schools and charter schools within the county? For example, our school had a 78% graduation rate, and we're in southern Wake County. Thank you.
I fully support charter schools, the expansion of additional charter schools and being held accountable with those types of results. It is a great value, when we're talking about how many schools that we had to build, the charter schools, like you said, you provide your own capital, you build your own building. We're, the county commissioners are not looking to bring to the public a billion-dollar school bond issue to build your buildings. So it's great economics for the county as well, along with academics that you've done. So I support additional charters. President Obama's looking for renovation. Part of our race to the top was about charters. I do think we, we fully funded education last year at $313 million. That was the request. I met with the governor last week in one of my roles as a county commissioner, and that three and a half billion dollar shortfall, where we're going to be short on education and on human services and other things, is when the state passes down their responsibility to all 100 counties.
I think that it's important to look at the total picture here in terms of talking about charter schools and public schools, because some charter schools are public charter schools, and they do receive money from the state. So I think that we have to put it in a proper context. I think that when you look at the race to the top, I think that's one of the things that legislation just recently passed, additional legislation to ensure that we look at in terms of using more charter schools, in terms, if we have a failing public school, that we would look at utilizing that. So I think they do serve a purpose, and there are many good uses of charter schools, and we have a lot of them here and throughout the county. But in order for us to do more and increase the number of public charter schools or any type of charter school, it's a state issue, it has to come through the legislature. They wouldn't have set the limits on that.
Thank you. District Two.
This could probably go for seven and two, since your opponent's not here. As a voter, what is the basic difference in you and your opponent? We've heard from some of the others, but the basic difference as a voter?
I have to stand up for this one. The most visible difference is, I'm here, representing you, he's not. I take very much pride in representing the citizens of Wake County, put in 110%, and my family would tell you, I'm always on call 24/7, and I will continue on doing that, because it's you, you are my bosses, every one of the citizens of Wake County. I will continue on advocating for your needs. May not have all the answers, but at least I will be visible enough, you will have access to me, and believe me, I will be the voice of reason. Thank you. That is the difference.
District Three.
I'm Lisa Artain, I'm a resident from Raleigh. I'm also an education policy specialist at NC State University, and I was one of the authors of our State's Race to the Top grant. So I'm pretty familiar with the low-performing schools. One of the goals of that grant was to eradicate low-performing and low-well schools statewide, and none of us are okay with a 58% graduation rate amongst any of our population groups. Can you all, can you point to, the current zoning plan would create approximately 15 to 25 low-performing and low-well schools. What research has the county commission been given to support the idea that creating 15 to 25 low-performing and low-well schools will increase the graduation rate in those population groups?
Okay, 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 okay.
None.
Well, I mean, this is a concern I have about the current plan, is that I've been looking a lot at what's going on in Mecklenburg County, where they went to neighborhood schools and, you know, schools that were at 50% poverty level went to 75% poverty level, and they were also increasingly segregated. I think what we've gotta do is really work with the school board and look at pumping more money in the system and get our focus back to student achievement. We've also gotta work on culture in these schools, bringing in entrepreneurs and businesses to actually come in and mentor these young kids, because a lot of them are in broken homes, they can't learn, and it's all about self-esteem. For the first few years of my life, I grew in a, in a high-poverty school, and unfortunately, my dad became a surgeon, and I was able to get out. So I've lived it, I understand it, and a lot of it comes down to self-esteem. So that's all I have to say about that.
Thank you. District Seven.
Hi, my name is Chris Spencer, and my family moved here about 12 years ago from Fairfax County. When we, when we started Fairfax County back in the 60s, it reminded me a lot of Raleigh and the Wake County area. It's 10 years later, it reminds me of Fairfax County in the 70s. The explosive growth that they have there is because they failed a plan, roads, schools, everything. And I see Wake County going exact same way. My question, 'cause I had to put a question here, is where do you see Wake County in the next 10 years, and how do you propose to get us there?
Thank you for that question, no kidding. Because this is one of the issues that I care about the most and one of the reasons I'm running for county commission. We have to have a comprehensive plan, and that includes the zoning and the land use requirements, includes water and sewer. It's not just what Wake County does, but it's the 13, it's the 12 municipalities. We have to coordinate the plan with them, the school infrastructure, which generates growth, the roads, which generate growth, the rail, which will generate growth. All that needs to be planned out on a comprehensive plan. I think that's doable, but it's not something that the county's gonna do by itself. It's gonna take cooperation with the local government officials of the other municipalities in the county. I think we've done that in the past, I think we're doing some of it now, but I think we need to really focus on a much more comprehensive planning process.
Okay, well, okay, actually, you can talk to them afterwards, okay? How about that? Or you can talk to any of them afterwards. Okay, last question.
Hi, I'm...
And it goes to District One.
Sure. I'm Carly Ruff, and I'm from here in Raleigh, and as our county grows, it's really important that we have affordable housing for people of all different income levels across the county and across municipalities, and I think it's also, our neighborhood patterns are very connected to what's going on in the school system now and our school assignment issue. What will you do to encourage the preservation and development of affordable housing across municipalities in our county?
Thank you so much for that one. I mean, that, that question, I mean, is truly important in terms of what we are seeing in Wake County public school system, because as Wake County's school system grows, the houses and the location are gonna be crucial, because if we do not have affordable housing throughout all the 12 municipalities, then that's where you're gonna see true segregation, because it's gonna zone those kids out that cannot afford to move into those areas. That's why affordable housing is so important. And what will I do? I will work with all 12 of those municipalities to ensure that they come on board, to make sure that we provide adequate housing for all of our citizens. I think that's the most important thing that we can do as county commissioners, is make sure that we take care of all 920,000 people. We cannot pick and choose. Thank you.
It's an appropriate question, particularly for District One. We probably have more affordable housing just through to the market than any other means. And we, the county commissioners, I believe the vote was unanimous, have put in place a policy that affordable housing would in fact be spread throughout the whole county. It wouldn't just be in one area, because you might have really good access on the 64 bypass, and you can get to downtown Raleigh and other places, and the land's cheaper, so more regular affordable housing, much less the subsidized affordable housing occurring in the eastern part of the county. So now, there's a certain percentage that we're asking that all of the municipalities participate unless they want more, more affordable housing in their areas. Cary, Apex, some of the areas had very little affordable housing. It does need to be spread out throughout the whole county. The, the new legislation that was passed for transit has an affordable housing element. So that aspect, you know, is being planned for. I would not want people to lose track that Wake County is one of 22 counties in America AAA-rated, one of the best places to live. Don't forget the North Carolina Museum of Art, don't forget the hurricanes, don't forget all these great things that are happening here, and only focusing on where things aren't quite... Oh, but I get the red sign, oh. Well, you know, okay. My signs are red.
Thank you very much. Now, we will proceed with the closing statements, and the candidates each have a minute and a half for their closing statement, and we will begin with Mr. Nichols.
This race presents a very clear choice between two different styles of leadership, between myself and Paul Cobal. And Paul, I'd like to thank you for coming tonight and contributing to the debate. But the difference... But the differences between us are very clear. Before, when I was on the Board of Commissioners, I worked in support of the Civic Center, Memorial Auditorium's expansion, the Children's Museum, Five County Stadium, the RBC Arena. Mr. Cobal, who was then on the city council, Raleigh City Council, opposed every one of those projects. I watched him on TV recently, and he said that he opposed the Triangle Transit Authority. I'm clearly in favor of that. What you're looking at is a difference in style between somebody who's always looking forward about what we can do to make our community better and somebody who's always going to say no. His uncle and his political hero was Jesse Hales, Senator No. Paul Cobal is Commissioner No. He's been no on everything, and I think that that's the main difference between myself and him, and I would appreciate your support.
Let me just say, I want to thank the League of Women Voters and the Wake Up Wake County for having this particular forum. But more importantly, ladies and gentlemen, for the past four years, I've been visible, demonstrated good fiscal leadership, and more importantly, as became the Board 2009 Vice Chair and Acting Chair. I am a bipartisan county commissioner who addresses controversial issues and come up with real solid solution. I've lobbed and prevented the closing of our libraries here in Wake County two years in a row. I've approved a fiscal balanced budget each year. I've advocated and secured a fire station in the Garner ETJ, and I've advocated for economic development, business opportunities throughout Wake County. I have been endorsed by the Wake County Teachers Association, the Triangle Labor Council, AFL-CIO, also the Wake County Realtors Association, also the Teamsters Labor Unit 391, and more importantly, the Wake County Democrat Women. Wake County citizens, I will continue to ensure your quality of life is not eroded by special interests. I ask for your support, and I ask for your vote on November 2nd. Thank you.
This election, as I said earlier, is about our vision for the future. I ask everyone tonight to remember the vision of Wake County, from Luther Hodges to Terry Sanford to Jim Hunt, what made us great, to bring companies and spawn companies like SaaS and Cree and Red Hat and Inspire Pharmaceuticals. And as your next county commissioner, I'm going to bring a new energy, a new leadership style, a dynamic approach to bringing people together, which I've done my whole career, and fight to get us back to the basics of job creation, aggressive investment. During this campaign, it's forced me to look back in our past, and all of us have to look back at what made this region great. Research Triangle Park didn't take off until we merged the Wake County and Raleigh schools, and now we're talking about moving away from that and moving back. You have a choice to decide what future, what county, what home your children are going to have. Do you want to move forward? I represent a new generation of leadership. I respect Tony Gurley's service to the county, but I think we're ready for new leadership. I ask for your consideration. I ask for you to run across with me, across Wake County, all of the candidates, come run with me. Let's listen to the voters, and let's bring positive change for the future generations of Wake County citizens to come. Thank you for your participation in these elections. God bless each and every one of you, and I look forward to serving as your next county commissioner. Thank you.
I think when, if you will talk with people that have worked with me over my career in public service, that they will say that Joe is a leader, and he has the ability to work across party lines and finding solutions and to do that in a civil manner, and that I'm thoughtful. If that's what you find, I hope that you will continue to vote for me, because I do think that there is a lot of work to continue to be done to keep this a great place to live, work, and play. We've done a lot on environmental stewardship, on open space, on transportation, on education. I worked across party lines and got an additional $6 million in operational funding a few years ago to more fund the requests that the school board requested that still didn't completely fund it. I am in a position now of numerous leadership positions, of chairing Kempo, of being the president of North Carolina Association of County Commissioners to be able to work on statewide issues as well. That leadership, to give you an example, where Tony and I were involved a few years ago on the state taking over Medicaid, there, the proposal on the table would have cost you taxpayers $50 million. We negotiated that, where Medicaid was taken over as swap for half-cent sales tax and saved you $50 million. We will be that check and balance that you also need, and that we can't possibly fund every single item that's out there, and we do have to make some hard choices on priorities. Joe Bryan, I hope you will continue to vote for me as one of your Wake County Commissioners. Thank you.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for being here this evening. Well, I think that the whole issue that we need to be aware of, that the people of Wake County are hurting. That's what this election is about. It's about true economic development. Who going to work for all the people of Wake County? Who going to provide that leadership? Who's going to be responsible to the people of Wake County? Because when you look around, what we're looking at, we've got one in five of people unemployed or underemployed. One in nine, they can't make their payment on their credit cards. One in eight, mortgages are in default or foreclosure. One in eight Americans are on food stamps, and some of those Americans are military soldiers. So you see, this is truly about economic development. As I move around and I travel around Wake County, and I talk with the voters, there's four issues that I campaigned on, and one issue is driving all those other three. Economic development is driving education. It's driving transportation, and it's driving our most vital resource, our kids and our citizens that cannot provide for themselves, such as those at mental health. When we look at in terms of the money that we provide and where we spend it at, there's three things that's eaten up all of our budget: medication, education, and incarceration. We cannot continue that road. We've got the leadership, we've had the individuals that's been there, but what have they done for all the citizens of Wake County? We must have an open and transparent government, and I ask for your vote. I need your vote, and that's what we'll be running on. Thank you.
Thank you very much. It's been an interesting evening, and I enjoy the opportunity to discuss the issues. The issues of economic development are very important. In fact, this Friday, we have a meeting with our Wake County Economic Development Group, and we're looking at incentives for business. We're not looking at incentives to bring in new business. We're looking at Wake County giving incentives to keep the current business that is already here, but is looking to move because of the high taxes, wasteful spending, and corruption that's in state government. So if thinking that we're going to go out and get new business just by asking them, that's living a fantasy world. We have got to clean up the state government, don't allow that three and a half billion-dollar deficit to negatively impact Wake County. And Mr. Bryan mentioned $50 million. That's $50 million a year that your Wake County Board of Commissioners was able to save Wake County taxpayers during a Medicaid swap when the state legislature was willing to take a penny of our sales tax away in return for paying for Medicaid. The difference between what we pay and what we receive in a penny of sales tax was $50 million a year. Now, my type of management may be a little abrasive sometimes. For example, I was in talks with Sheriff Harrison to padlock the state legislative offices as a matter of a county emergency, if they went with that, but we were able to save you the $50 million. So thank you.
All right. I want to conclude this evening's candidate forum with a request that people can make sure that they're registered to vote. We have lots of voter registration forms. If you have any neighbors, friends, coworkers who might need to register, please take forms with you. We've got plenty to go around. And then last, I want to thank all of you for coming out tonight and participating actively in this forum. It's great to see that we have such an engaged electorate. And then I want to thank all of the candidates for coming tonight and participating and answering some very tough questions. So please, give everybody a round of applause.
And thank you so much, Mary Ann Lewin, for doing a fabulous job as our moderator. And one last thing is, if you have friends and neighbors who want to know, if they'd like to view this forum, it will be on RTN, and there'll be a link to that on Wake Up Wake County's website. You can also view the audio, listen to the audio right now on the State League of Women Voters website, L W V N C dot org. And thank you for the Center for Better Education for the audio. Good night.
This has been a replay of voteradio.com's coverage of the 2010 Wake County Commissioners' Candidate Forum presented by Wake Up Wake County and the Wake County League of Women Voters. The forum was held in Raleigh on September 27th, 2010. To learn more about these and other North Carolina candidates, visit ncvotorguide.org, an online voter guide created by the NC Center for Voter Education and UNC TV. This and other election 2010 programming is available online at voteradio.com.